Welcome to the meeting of the Wareham School Committee. Today's Wednesday, June 6th, 2018. The meeting is being recorded and broadcast by W- excuse me, WCTV. And an audio recording is being made by Mrs. Ruiz. Could we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(noise) A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is public comment. Would anyone like to address the committee? Okay, seeing no one, we'll go to the next item, which is good news. Does anyone have any good news they'd like to share? Mike?
I attended the, with a bunch of you, the Ice Cream Social for the incoming kindergarteners. That was great. Ms. Bakayaki was doing triple duty between all the toppings and serving the ice cream. And I just had my little chocolate syrup that I was squirting. But it was a good time. Also, I attended the Top Ten Awards for the high school. That was, that was, that was great, too. They always do such a great job. Mr. Rumbold gave a really, really good speech. I wish that was on, I wish that was recorded. It was really, did you see, you heard it too? Yeah, it was great. Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
We received the Coordinated Family and Community Engagement Grant in the amount of $100,000 for the fiscal year 2019, so we're very happy to have received that. And our programs will be continuing. Tomorrow night, we have the Senior Honors, which will be at 7:00 in the high school auditorium. And then, rain, stay away because Friday night is graduation.
Thank you. So I'd just like to congratulate a few people. First, I want to congratulate our own WCTV interns who are here tonight. Jason Ellis and Elena Nicoletti, who won awards at the MOVE Awards. So congratulations. Also, I want to congratulate our own Jamie Reed for her recognition at the award ceremony the other night. Congratulations. Also, today, one of our kindergarten teachers was awarded a Teacher of the Month Award by a local radio station, which I'm sure was very exciting at Deacon School today. So congrats to her. It's always nice to be recognized for their hard work. What else do we have for good news? I just wanted to say congratulations to all of the spring sport athletes, the season that just came to an end. The girls tennis team made the tournament for the first time in 20 years, so congrats to them. And to all the athletes who had a, had a good season. Okay, so we'll go to the next item on the agenda, which is the minutes of the meeting from May 23rd, 2018. Does anyone have any questions or changes to those minutes? Could I have a motion to approve them?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Next on the agenda is the update on the Minor Forest Building Project, which I guess I should correct myself. So we're no longer going to call it the Minor Forest Building Project. Is that correct? We'll call it the Elementary School Building Project.
Yeah, I think to fairly encapsulate the Deacon School and the project as well, given the scope of the project. And my, the Wareham Elementary School Project, until we come up with another name for the school.
Okay.
So, I can just give a quick update on the, on where we are with the project today. The superintendent and the assistant superintendent and the principal for Minor and myself and the Chair of School Committee, as well as the design team and the project manager, we all went up to the Massachusetts School Building Authority today and met with the Facilities Assessment Subcommittee. And that is the step before we will go forward to the MSBA Board Meeting, when they would approve the overall project to move forward. And the purpose of the Facilities Assessments Subcommittee is really to review our design, our budget, our project scope, and assure, ensure it is all in line with MSBA objectives and in line with the original objectives of the project. So the meeting went well. It was, they are rigorous and they go through everything in a lot of detail. They had, you know, some challenging questions to keep us on, to make sure we are still going in the right direction. And I think everything went well and compact, similarly to how these meetings tend to go, according to our project manager. So, they really just making sure that our design meshes with our education plan, that the project, their district enrollment is going to fit with the design as well. They were very impressed with the design and pleased with the work that the designer has done in a, with, in the, in the, on the Minor site. And so, we've, they're gonna, we're taking away some actions there, things that they want more information about. And we're working on that over the next couple of weeks. And we have a meeting of the School Building Committee on Monday next week.
Okay, so, and the meeting Monday is at 5:30 in the Multi Service Center, in Room 228. And the public is welcome to attend any of those meetings. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions about the project? No? So the next item on the agenda is also, Michael, report of the business manager.
All right. Hello again. All right, so, a couple of reports before you and a, and a sort of quest for some transfers. The monthly expenditure report, you know, we are just a month away from, oh, we're now in the final month of the year. And so, we are, you know, starting to spend down our accounts. We have had a budget freeze in place for some times. You'll see some of the lines for supplies and such like, where we have that degree of control. They are, they do have balances in them. Hey, you know, I know I sound like a broken record, but the issues have been out of district tuition and transportation services, where that's, those have been definitely the toughest areas, and where we've seen the biggest increases above what we'd budgeted. We have used, we have drawn in school choice funds to help offset the cost of transportation. And, you know, in a subsequent agenda item, we're going to talk about the Sped Stabilization Fund. Any, maybe easiest if there are any particular questions on this report.
Does anyone have any questions?
We'll just...
This is on the monthly expenditure report? It's on the finance report, yeah.
I do, I do apologize for not getting out quicker. The month only ended a few days ago, so it's just tough. So I apologize.
Okay, so no, I guess there are no questions about that?
As always, if you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. So I also circulated a summary of our revolving funds and private grants, which just runs through all of those kinds of funds which we have in operation at the moment, with our end balance and a kind of summary of where the money comes from and what it's to be used for. You know, clearly, the largest ones are the school choice, the transportation fund, food service account, and a, you know, it's kind of self-explanatory. Are there any specific questions about these funds?
Mike?
Now, are these all of the grants?
No, so these are just revolving funds and private grants. I'm going to bring state grants and federal grants to the next meeting.
At the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I saw something missing, I'm like...
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
I had one question. Under the GED, the plan to close the account, will that balance be put over, even as small as it is, to like the past program and things like that?
Yeah, exactly. We'll probably try and spend it down, and so we can close it out. There's just no more money coming in there. It's just residual, it's been there for a long time, so we'll try and work out some suitable way to spend the money and keeping with the original intentions.
And just, just so, I mean, normally I'd be, normally I'd have a lot more questions, but like you said, we just got this yesterday.
Yeah, yeah. So, well, when I come back with the private, state and private grants, we can maybe quickly review this again. We'll be able...
Okay. No. I just have a question, Michael, about Circuit Breaker. So, the ending balance here is $337,000, some odd dollars. And you say that you have $300,000 more that you need to spend. So, is that ending balance, how does that compare to the ending balance last year?
So, it is, so we will pretty much have spent all of Circuit Breaker by the end of this year, whereas we had at the end of last year around $400,000 left.
Okay.
So, there is, so although the ending balance is 337, we also have just about $300,000 of purchase orders, which is actually not reflected in the ending balance here. There is one more Circuit Breaker payment expected. And there are also outstanding tuition payments, which are being entered as we speak. So we've had students on standard evaluations and new students still coming into the district, or just going out, who are, who we don't even have purchase orders for yet.
So this is what you've been referring to throughout the budget?
Yeah.
Discussion about Circuit Breaker?
Yes, yes, exactly. So, when you were talking, you know, when my slide showed this increase in out-of-district tuition, and partly it was driven by an actual increase, an overall increase in tuition. It was also the impact in the LEA, it was because we had less Circuit Breaker to draw on. This is it. So, we have less available here. At the end of last year, we had $400,000 in Circuit Breaker. This year, we have nothing. So, part of that was, you know, that was intentional, partly because we had the Sped Stabilization Fund to draw on, and also because we've been trying to offset those costs.
And so this situation has already been addressed in the budget?
For next year.
For next year?
Yeah, yes. Yeah, the not having that to draw on next year, yes, is reflected in the budget.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And so how is it impacting us? Are we taking from the LEA budget to cover, or how?
Well, that's for next year. So, it's impact, it impacts us next year, and that's why we had such a difficult budget process. And that's why we're, all those difficult decisions we've made are, are, but not only, but partly because of this.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but normally how it works with Circuit Breaker is that the money that you receive usually isn't applied until the following year. So like, the money that we would receive now normally would not be used until...
So, yeah, so, in the past, what we've tried to do is not spend the money until the following year, yeah. But as the costs have gone up, it's just, it's become more and more difficult to do that. And part of it was intentional, you know, an explicit decision in light of the Sped Stabilization Fund, that that would be, that would be there in part to help offset any costs.
Right. Okay.
And then I did have some transfers that I was hoping you would approve. So... A couple of these are just making, just people being, just correcting accounts, really. So the first couple are a technology person who was originally budgeted at the high school, but actually is now more of a district role. And so that's to, just change that, so it's coming out the right account line. And then the other one is a person who was originally incorrectly budgeted as a teacher and is actually, you know, providing therapy services to students. So the first two transfers are just to reflect those, the actual situation. And then, the legal services, so, you know, we have, I've mentioned this at previous meetings, but we have seen an increase in legal services. That's about, I think about two-thirds of that is driven by special education cases. And part because of the freeze on spending, we've had, we have a surplus, we have funds available in classroom supplies, and that's why I'm proposing taking money from there to offset the increase in legal services. And then the final area is just building maintenance, which has also been an ongoing issue. And we have a surplus in custodial salaries, partly because of a couple of vacancies or absences, and we wish to use money from there to offset building maintenance costs.
Does anyone have any questions with the transfers? Mike?
Are any of these transfers as a result of the leadership restructuring?
No.
Okay, thank you.
This is all just this year.
So I should probably know the answer to this question, but I'm going to ask it anyway.
Oh, I do.
The budgeted amount for legal services, have, have we adjusted that for next year?
Yeah. So that was also something we increased in our budget, going into next year.
Mm-hmm, okay. What was, what was the budgeted amount this year?
It was $35,000.
Okay. Okay. All right, anyone else? Mike?
Just, just for the people watching at home and such, the $35,000, that's for all of our legal costs, right?
Yes, so yeah.
So that's grievances, that's, you know, parents' sovies, or whatever, you know?
Every time anybody picks up the phone to call lawyers, this is where it goes.
Okay, there's not, there's not any other subitem anywhere in the budget?
No, yeah, exactly. We don't pay legal costs anywhere else, just from this, because technically, technically the school committee is our legal entity. So all legal advice is technically to the school committee.
And when we negotiate, then it takes off?
And when we have cases where we're about to provision special education services, then we have, you know, we're meeting with attorneys and meeting with parents and their attorneys, then that's also...
And that's all under there?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Could I have a motion to approve the transfers?
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Okay, still you.
Yeah.
Next on the agenda is the vote to access the Special Education Stabilization Fund.
So it's not just me?
Oh, and Melissa.
Because Melissa's going to come down as well.
She's suffered me in the business.
Yeah. All right, so, we have a few slides to run through, which will give you a bit of background on the situation we're in, and also how we got here and what the Sped Stabilization Fund is. I'll set some of the context and Melissa will provide all the detail. So, all right, so, so we have a projected deficit in our special education tuition. I do actually have some copies of this. Thanks, Melissa. So, of all the funds we have allocated for special education tuition, we have just, at the moment, we have just under $3.3 million. And our projected expenditure is just, oh, $3.45 million. So that leaves us a deficit of $183,000. So where that money's coming from is a mixture of the LEA, the funds allocated within the LEA budget, Circuit Breaker funds, and IDEA grant. So if you remember, we moved some tuition into our IDA, or Sped 240 grant, which is one of the biggest grants we receive. Now, you may remember that you did actually approve a transfer out of special education budget. So that was used to offset a special education transportation costs, which are also, do also qualify for spending through the Stabilization Fund. So, had we not done that, we'd just be sitting here presenting transportation costs. So, hey, it's all out of the same bucket that the Sped Stabilization Fund applies to. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So, what we are proposing to do to meet this deficit is a request of funding of $100,000 from the Sped Stabilization. Then we would make budget transfers of $83,000, and that would resolve the balance. So I just wanted to put this in some context. So we had, so we had a big increase from 2014 to 2015 here. Let me just, kind of, these numbers are really small if I can choose. So, 2013 is just $1.9 million. 2014 is $1.9, and then 2015 is $2.7 million. It increased again, increased again to 2016, over $3 million. And it did level off slightly into 2017, and that gave us probably a false sense of security. And as then, we saw another significant jump into this year, where it's over $3.4 million. And then we have budgeted for another significant increase into next year. So, oh, sorry.
So, this is for out-of-district sped to where, like a bunch of outsourced, you know, facilities, right?
Yeah, so this is a, you maybe...
So, we have students that are at all of the collaboratives that we participate with, as well as some that are in private Chapter 766 state-approved special education schools. And it also covers other pieces that we're going to talk about coming up. Extended evaluations, independent evaluations, disciplinary placements that we have to make for students with IEPs, and we're going to address each one of those separately.
All right, so, you might, you might answer my question, but, so, when did we close West Wareham?
When the spike comes?
I would say 2016?
Do you think that some of that spike might be due to that?
So, I think that some of the students who were at West did go out of district. So that would have sent some increase. But, I mean, the numbers we had at the time suggested that increase would be less than that was costing us to run in district, so...
Yeah, I think that was the justification.
Yeah, exactly.
But it just keeps going up.
Yeah, I know.
And you have to, you have to wonder if we still had that building, if we'd be absorbing it in-house, you know? But we don't know, we'd never know.
No, and I think, you know, you know, with hindsight, I'm not sure we'd make any difference, because we were sitting with that huge increase from 2014 to 2015. Which suggested that West, well, West at the time wasn't doing enough to offset those increases. But I don't know, it's so hard to tell.
I think just to put it in perspective, too, I think the variety of needs that we're seeing now, the type of programming that we would have to offer would be very costly in district to be able to bring back some of the students that we've had to outplace. It's a wide variety of services that we would have to provide.
Yeah, I know I keep saying it, but I gotta talk to you for a while.
I mean, I think, you know, we do, we do look at this all the time, to see whether there are commonalities amongst the students who are going out of district, and whether those are, we could develop programs in district to meet those needs. But I think, and you know, Melissa's expert on this, but there is a reason that these out-of-district placements exist, and it's because provision of these services is very costly. The level of expertise, the nursing services, the facilities, the, you know, I think, you know, all sorts of things have to be provided. And these schools that provide are able to do so because they have so many more students. They've got students coming from all over the state, and that gives them the ability to afford it, which we just don't have. So, Melissa's going to talk about three different areas which have driven some of the increase in costs.
So three different things that we have identified when Michael and I are going through all of this is disciplinary placements that we've had to make this year. And disciplinary placements are when we have a student who has an IEP or identified disability, and they are, have an offense at school that is, that qualifies them to go on to a long-term suspension. So, under 37 each and 37, 37 each and a half, and 37 each and three-quarters, Mass General Law, if we are putting a student out for expulsion because of a felony charge, pending felony charge to be resolved, or if we're putting a student out for what they call imminent danger, their danger to themselves, other students or staff, we could exercise Chapter 37 and a half H and 37 each and three-quarters. And in doing so, if the student has a disability, we're still required to provide vape. So even though we might remove a child, let's say, for example, from Wareham Middle School, because of an offense, you know, any kind of offense that would cause an expulsion for another student, we can remove them from our middle school, but we have to continue to provide services for them. So, that a lot of times will result in having to place an in-and-out-of-district placement that specializes in whatever the behavior might be. So we've had, this year, in 2017, 2018, we've had five disciplinary placements, and two of them have been in the last month and a half. Yes, ma'am?
Last year, how many? Is this up from last year, or?
Last year, we, I don't, today, we couldn't pull any data, but we've had a problem all week to be able to pull data off of Eastbed, so I wasn't able to get into Eastbed to pull data, so I didn't have enough time to get that for you, but I could get that for you. Any other questions? Mary? No?
Mike?
Just to Laurie's point, does that number sound high to you?
It's, you know, I think this year has presented us with a unique set of circumstances with a couple of students that we've had come through that have not necessarily been Wareham residents, but ended up in our system through DCF. So this, in my experience, is high. But I would be interested, too, to look at what it looked like last year. Those are five this year.
Five new placements?
Five new disciplinary.
Even just as a percentage? You know, that's almost 10%, you know, we have 60 odds, so that's 8, 9% of new placements.
And are felonies involved in all five?
Felonies are involved in three out of the five. The other two were imminent danger.
So, and so that's, those kids wouldn't be a candidate for the alternative school then, either?
For our alternative program, we, we don't have, yeah, a program that could support that. So our therapeutic learning center, some of these students were from the therapeutic learning center.
Okay, thank you.
Which is really what our highest level of therapeutic support that we have in district, that we have access to in district.
We're still going.
Another area that we've seen an increase in, almost double at every school, and I'll show you some numbers, is a request for independent evaluations. So, a parent has the right, when we do an evaluation, to reject our assessments and have independent evals done. It is very difficult, a very difficult process to, to refuse to do those. It gets us into a BSEA hearing process immediately if the district says no. So we end up very carefully weighing each decision that comes in to decide if we're going to take it to hearing, or if we are going to agree to the outside evals. And they can be very costly, depending on what type of eval, how many evals they reject from the evaluations that we've done. It can be anywhere from $750 to $10,000 per student. Our increase in IEEs this year, in 2016, 17, we had seven, and that's total across all schools. This year, we are already up to 12, and I have two that are in mediation right now. Yes, Mary?
I'm just curious, what that, what does that have to do with out-of-district placements?
It doesn't, it wouldn't, this has nothing to do with out-of-district placements, even though some of these kiddos might have to go, and that's the next slide, to an alternative place to do the extended eval. What it does show is the increase in costs and the reason why we're requesting funds. Increase in special ed costs.
My question, by publicly funded district, the district is funding this?
Yes, yeah, so the district is, the district is required to fund. And there's a state rate set, so we have to fund up to that rate set. And anything above that, we would have to do through mediation or a legally binding agreement, through attorneys. So we have to provide, and the other caveat is, the parent can choose who they want to do the evaluation, up to that cap, so... And extended evaluation placements is the third thing that I think is, has really increased between 1617 and the 1718 school year that we're in right now. But sometimes, when we have students who we need to do extended evals, we need to look closer at the reasons why they're struggling, or there might be disagreement in what type of evals we've done, requests for additional evals, and we might have to send students out to collaboratives to be, or to 766 schools, even though it's usually collaboratives, to do the assessments there during that time, to separate them, to be able to have specialized services and be evaluated by that staff. And that, again, is a tremendous cost that can range from $10,000 to $40,000. And that, again, is a tremendous cost that can range from ten to forty thousand dollars, depending on what type of service it is, what disability category it is. And then this, I broke it down by just the general increase. So, in two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, across all the schools in the district, we only had three requests for extended evaluations in outside placements. This year, we have nine, and again, I have two in mediation. Yes, Mary?
So, one question I have is, how many do you think come back from extended evaluations and outside placements?
So, extended evaluations, I would say we probably get about two-thirds back.
Really? That's amazing.
Yeah, sometimes I try to do it just as, as a way to make sure that we are taking a really close look by a team that really knows how to specialize in that particular disability. And it might be something that we might not be able to have the staffing and the resources to do in district. And sometimes it might be that they require specialized service also during that time to kind of regulate and restart. So that we are able to that and transition them back with recommendations from that evaluation. So, I'd say about two-thirds come back, about one-third.
I commend you for that because I, in my experience, most times they end up staying there. So, the other comment I add to that is that you can't get reimbursement from circuit breaker for extended evals.
Because it's just not, because it's just not enough.
No, they just don't, they just don't even look at it.
All right, so, so the Sped stabilization fund was set up in the Municipal Modernization Act back in two thousand sixteen. And that enables municipalities to establish a reserve fund to be used in future years for unanticipated or unbudgeted costs of special education, either tuition or transportation. So, that was set up last year, and in the fall, the district, the town, they put two hundred thousand dollars into that fund. Funds can only be expended with your approval and with the approval of the selectman. And that's really why we're here this evening. And if you were to approve this, then we would then go and seek approval as selectman. And that's the vote we're requiring.
Does anyone have any questions?
If we, if we approve this, this expenditure, how is that fund replenished?
Well, it either has to be through town meeting votes or by, if we have any residual funds at the end of the year, we can also pay into it. But, hey, town meeting vote is the primary.
And would you be given this?
Down to a hundred thousand.
Would you essentially be given the same presentation to the selectman?
Yeah.
Anyone else? So, I'd be looking for a motion to approve the expenditure of a hundred thousand dollars from the Sped specialization, stabilization fund for the cost of special education tuition, subject to the approval of the selectman. Second, anyone?
I'll second it because I don't see any choice.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is the acceptance of gifts.
Yes, I'm asking for three gifts to be approved. The first would be the PTA enrichment grants awarded to middle school teachers totaling seven thousand five hundred sixty-five dollars and seventy-one cents. The second, four hundred and nine dollars and thirty-nine cents from Stop and Shop A-plus Awards to the high school. And the third class of two thousand eighteen gift of creating an outdoor eating area, an additional cement pad and a white vinyl fence. I would ask the committee to please vote to approve the three gifts.
So moved.
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's recommendation for the business manager.
I'd invite Susan Owens to come and have a seat. Mrs. Owens is coming tonight as the candidate for the business manager position. She has been at Sharon since nineteen ninety-seven to the present, and I would turn it over for a brief introduction to Mrs. Owens.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me here tonight. It's very interesting for me to see a different school committee meeting after sitting at the same group for twenty-one years, so it's exciting. I'm glad to be here. I'll give you a little. History, sorry. We don't have mics. Give you a little history. I was a paralegal when I first got out of school, and I worked for a law firm for about ten years. I decided that that was a little bit boring after a while. So, I moved on to be an HR director at a high tech company that manufactured data acquisition boards. And they merged with the home company in Cleveland. I was offered to go to Cleveland to relocate, however, I chose not to because there's not a whole lot there other than the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame and a lot of flats. So, from there, I went to the Sharon Public Schools. I took the summer off, and I started there in November first of nineteen ninety-seven. I've been there ever since. I did start as the HR manager. And then I, I transitioned over to business manager, and I still kind of straddle both. We have a part-time HR person who's retiring this year, who's been there about twenty-six years. So, I oversee most of what she does. She will handle the day-to-day things, and then I handle the bigger, like I do negotiations where I am now. We do mediations, we, I do contracts for the superintendent, a list of things like that. So, that's kind of my history, I mean, twenty-one, twenty-one years of that combined. We've built a brand-new middle school, which is where I'm located now. And we have a preschool section in there, so it kind of sounds like what's going to happen here at the middle school. You're going to have two separate schools within one, so that's interesting to me. We've done renovations, we're actually been approved to have a new high school built. We were approved by the Mass School Building Authority and town voted last November, I believe, to go forward with it. So, we're just kind of doing schematics and OPMs and things like that right now, and they're deciding which option to go with. What else? A little personal, I was born and raised in Taunton. But I've been in Rochester for about twenty, twenty-one years, so the commute to Sharon has been from Rochester, which is about an hour. So, it's been wearing, it's, you know, it's two hours a day of travel. School committee meetings, we usually don't get home till between eleven and twelve at night. I don't know how they run here, we'll find out. Other than that, I have, you know, I'm, I'm an animal lover, I have great stepchildren. And I'm, I'm just excited to be here and accept the challenge of filling the big shoes that he's leaving behind. But I'm very excited to see what I can bring from experiences I've had in Sharon. And, you know, just knowledge from what I've learned in Sharon and what I can bring here to help the district continue to grow and move forward. And also give, give the students the best education that we can give them. But thank you again for giving me the opportunity.
Thank you, Susan.
Does anyone have any questions for me?
Rebecca?
Rebecca does.
So, have you had a chance to kind of take a look at our school system, our website and things like that?
I have been studying your website, I have.
What are your thoughts about Wareham?
My thoughts about Wareham, I think you're trying to do a whole lot with very little.
Amen.
That's pretty much how I summarized it. Great team, I met the administrative team. You know, everybody's looking for the same goal, but finances are very tight.
What, what do you think our greatest challenge would be here?
Balancing that budget. You know, it's, it's interesting to hear, like when Mike presented the commonalities that we have. So, even though we're a very different district, our tuitions have gone up quite a bit this year. About five hundred thousand dollars up, unexpected. We do have the Sped stabilization fund, we have not tapped into that this year yet. We do have some funding left at the end of the year, and we will probably put that in to the stabilization fund. We see a lot of the changes at the middle school, which seems to be the breaking point. So, I saw that commonality when they were presenting also with the, what was the other thing I saw? I just lost my train of thought. Something with a specialized department.
In Sharon, do you have similar, I guess, challenges with the higher percentage of special education needs in your district? Some much like what we have here in Wareham?
We do, we do. So, what I, what I was thinking, and I forgot my train of thought, was this year was the first year we had the disciplinary, we had outplace disciplinary. And that, that was very costly to us, and it was very unexpected to us because we haven't had that in the past. So, again, listening to them present, I'm like, oh, we did that, you know, we have that here too, and we have that here too. We, we have lots of challenges in Sharon, we tease and say that we have a billboard out on ninety-five that says, if you want special ed, come to Sharon. Because we build whatever program you're looking for. And I know when we talked in some of our, our interviews, you know, and there's the ASD program or the NET program. We had a CHAMS collaborative for a while, we have team-based learning, we have a LEAP, which is for more of a dyslexic-type disabilities. We have social-emotional programs. You name it, we have it. I mean, we do have about fifty to sixty outplace students, which is, which is high for us. But again, you can't always accommodate them in-house, you know, we try to bring as many students back in-house as we can, within reason. You know, we have, we have a lot of deliberations back and forth about injuries because we do have a lot, we do see a lot of injuries in some of our artistic programs. That we have to actually buy, I don't know if you do, we have to buy actual uniforms for them to wear. Because we, we have very extensive autism needs in our district. So, I, it's similar but different. That's why I'm kind of looking forward to it, looking forward to spend some time with Mike and kind of jump into his shoes and see, get to learn the ropes. And, you know, see what I can do to help the team move the district forward. You know, exciting for me, after twenty-one years, I'm like, I've got all these things in my head that.
I'm excited to hear that, you know, you've had the experience with building new schools and getting, and the vote presented to your town, and, you know, the town was behind the school system. I think that that would be a great resource for us here in Wareham.
Great, yeah, our town's been very, I mean, our, our community is very involved, probably too much so, but they're also very supportive, which, which is a good thing. Because if you don't have the support of the community, then you're not going, you're not going to get the money, you're not going to get the override, you're not, you know, you're not going to get the things that you need.
Do you think the demographic's very different in Sharon than it is in Wareham?
Again, it's, it's very diverse, but in a different way. It, you know, Sharon is a very wealthy district. But we, we have very diverse, I mean, we have Islamic center, and we have a high Russian population, a high Indian population, a high Haitian population, high Chinese population. So, it's very, it's different in that sense. Where I think Wareham is, is less fortunate financially to do some of the things that you'd probably like to do. And I know in talking at some of the meetings that you have a lot of GCF kids coming in through foster care and stuff that you, you know, you don't have an option, they have, they come. And we don't see a lot of that, like, we have very few.
We've got a population of, of high-risk students that really need our support.
Yeah, we don't see a lot, like, I don't have a lot of that in Sharon, the foster care piece. We, like I said, we do have some that have come in from like Haiti that they've brought over. And, you know, we have one little boy that came in that he, he watched his parent, his mother and his siblings be blown up, and he has no arms or legs. And we're trying to service him, but he doesn't speak English. So, you know, we have situations like that. So, it's similar but different, I think, you know, I can relate to, to it, but in a different way, if that makes sense.
Would you know what percentage of the, the student body would be free or reduced lunch in Sharon?
It's a very low percent. It's probably twenty, eighteen to twenty percent. It's, it's very low.
What, how do you feel about coming into a district where we're sitting at seventy-five percent?
I'm up for the, I'm up for a challenge, I am up for a challenge. Again, find ways to help the team and the community to get where we need to go. You know, we have, we have to supply them with, with free and reduced, that's what we do.
That's true. Well, I love your positive attitude.
Well, thank you. I'm excited, and this is going to be, this is going to be fun.
Just out of curiosity, what is the percentage of special education students in Sharon?
It's probably, maybe twenty-seven percent.
Twenty-seven? Wow. I think probably over determining eligibility there.
Probably, probably. There, there are probably some students that probably don't need to be special ed. But again, we have very involved parents and very knowledgeable parents, and they know what their rights are, and they push for them, so.
And you asked most of my questions, so Melissa.
Well, I did have the pleasure of meeting Susan already, so I just want to say welcome.
Thank you very much.
So, I would ask the committee to the approval of the business manager, Susan Owen.
Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, five zero zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to Wareham.
Thank you, I'm excited.
Next is the superintendent's report.
Yes. Approval of bills and payment warrants. With the ones that you already have listed, I have three others. The first one for the bills, eighty thousand two hundred ninety-six dollars and eighty-five cents. And one hundred nine thousand nine hundred thirty-four dollars and fifty-six cents. Payroll in the amount of one hundred forty-two thousand two hundred ninety-three dollars and eighty-two cents. I would ask for your approval of the payroll and bill warrants.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, five zero zero.
Yesterday, I sent you a document that shows what the staffing will be at the schools next year. And there were some class sizes this afternoon, I received a request to give some comparisons from this year, as well as class sizes for special ed. My apologies, we were in Boston most of the day. I was able to get that out to you later on in a draft form. So, if you have any questions, we're continuing to update some of that information, and we'll follow it up with you. If you have any questions about the configuration for next year, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
I just want to, with the clarification on the special education numbers. It's not just for the substantially separate, right, it's for the whole grade, what is at each grade level?
Yeah, I can get that to you, yeah. And I can get it by grade level and then by total school.
Okay, good, thanks.
Mike?
Just, could you define specialists?
Oh, yes, specialists are physical education, art, music. What I will, so, I think what, after you look at this, if you have questions, and while you're thinking of them. What I would tell you is when, once we sit down and we've been working with the principals as we're coming into the final stretch. We're in the scheduling process, we're in the room configurations, after going through the rooms. Especially with the minute staff coming over, you know, there were some room assignments that were made that when you look at the programs going into the rooms, there's some adjustments being made. So, Mrs. Seaman is working with the teachers to make those adjustments. So, you did receive. So you did receive maps. There will be some changes on that. Once everything is finalized and students in the teachers' rooms have been determined, we will send you some new information about where people are located. But depending on the programs, it also affects where they need to be. So we're very aware of that. When you look at our total, there have been twenty-two reductions of positions, full-time positions. There were three reduction in force. We eliminated fourteen part-time cafeteria positions, but we added back twelve full-time positions. And the reason why that was done is because of, we're a hundred percent free lunch, breakfast, and we do do dinners. We really need the additional time. And with the part-time people, the overlapping, we just weren't able to cover the breakfast and the lunches, and then clean up and start the evening preparation. And so by adding the extra hours and the full-time positions, it allows us to fully staff. The other thing that I would mention to you is, it's funded by the cafeteria. And right now, our cafeteria is running with a very healthy increase. So we're putting back in. Because of this, we also know that we can do new meals, different foods, and different configurations to have students come in and out. As well as when you look at the number of students per building, we're going to be very busy in the cafeterias at breakfast and at lunchtime. The areas of concerns that we've talked about, I'd like to address them with you, would be at Minnet. Our goal is to come into the final stretch and have some money that we can put toward a social worker. We feel like the support could be used there. If you look at the middle school in fifth and sixth grade, if we could add one more teacher to that area, we feel like that would bring it down. Of course, with any of adjustments at this point, it certainly is going to affect where students are, teachers' classrooms. And then at central office, we lost a bookkeeper. And as you look at the amount of work that we're bringing in, we may be coming to have a conversation about adding a bookkeeper at some point. Of course, that's, would be if there's money. And certainly, students come first. We have increased our number of students coming in for exchange programs next year. We're up approximately, almost to a hundred thousand dollars that we will be bringing in. And with that, we feel like we can add back a counselor, we can add a counselor, not add back, but to add a counselor at the high school that will take care of working with the exchange students, as well as the increased students coming into the high school. So that will increase the high school's support staff. So if you have questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them, if I know.
You go ahead.
One question I do have, and that's why I did ask for the special ed numbers, is why there's only halftime team chair at Deacon's with six hundred eighty students and a full-time team chair at Minnet with three hundred ninety-four students?
The halftime team chair at Minnet...
Oh, it's a full-time.
Full-time, no, sorry, at Deacon's, I meant to say. Right now, that's what they have. And, I'm getting hands... Yeah. And with the, and you just heard, Mrs. St. Clair's going to pick up three, four, and five next year at the high school. But currently, we just replaced what was at Deacon's. We know that preschool will take some. We are shifting another school psych over to Deacon's, it should have said two. And that person will help cover.
Okay. Mike?
Madam Chair, this has been helpful, you know, there's numbers and stuff. But I'd like to go back to the graphs that we were presented with. And with your indulgence, can we have it up on the screen? I put them on a stick that we can...
Oh, yeah.
You just put them on the screen?
Sure. Michael can help you. Or Andrea can help you, one of the two.
Thank you. And I printed some out too, so if you just pass two of these down, I will share one.
Mike, let me just ask you, so we were presented, which...
All right, so I was waiting for him to go up, but while he's doing that. So originally, these are slides, the first two slides are from the February twenty-eighth meeting. And it shows the current, this year's structure. And then it shows the proposed structure at the time, you know, of closing Minnet and moving Minnet, you know, into the middle. Sorry. I'm sorry. Moving Minnet and adding the deans and department chairs and such, right? And then there was the, and then ultimately, that wasn't decided. The superintendent had changed it such that the deans weren't there. And then the slide that we were given, I think, May twenty-seventh. Was, when was that?
Sometime in May, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, before, the day before the meeting. So I just, I just wanted to have the juxtaposition and see, and see if, between, if you can just, actually, if you just, yeah, there you go. And these are your slides, really, you know? So you see, that's the current structure this year, right? And so if we go to the proposed structure for, this is, this is like what we voted on at that, at that meeting at the, at the high school before town meeting, right? This is what, this is what we had expected when we voted. And then the next slide is what we ended up getting. So if, you don't even need to know English, if you just can see colors, you can see, you can see there's huge changes here. And I'm trying to understand the benefits of going with this structure versus the one that we were going to do. And I'm really concerned about the discipline and the lack of deans. And I want to know what we're going to be doing about discipline moving forward next year.
It looks like it's different.
Well, it's way different.
When we looked at and had conversations with principals and asked them to look at their structures, this was their recommendation. One of the pieces that they came back with was, number one, the number of evaluations that need to be done. The number of other supports that need to be put in place. When you look at our surveys from our faculty and even from parents, the structures that we have supported and we've put in place, we certainly are seeing results. When we started coming into the final, before this was made, and we started seeing the number of retirements and resignations, then money started to free up a bit that we did not anticipate having. With that happening, then we were able to keep the assistant principals in place. When we came into the middle school and we asked for their recommendation with the deans, they chose not to have a dean, and they have a different configuration that they feel they'll be able to cover. So really, this was a collaborative exercise with the administrators to come up with this.
Also, the, there was, we were looking at the amount of students and deans teach as well, but they teach part-time. And so one of the ways in which we could help class size was to have them take on more classes. And so with the assistant principals back in process, right, because it was an elimination of them and an addition of deans.
Right.
If we, if we did that, then the class sizes would enlarge, which we were a little bit nervous about that. So it was looking at all of those elements to think, how are we best going to get this done in a way that is going to help everyone? And we, we believe this, we didn't eliminate all of the deans, but we added extra support administratively, full-time into the middle school.
There's, there's no deans at all at the middle school?
No, but there are three assistant principals.
Right. And so when I see this, I see what, the people that handle the discipline are the assistant principals, right? And I see, I don't know, two and a half, two and a half people dealing with discipline at the middle school under this plan. And when you go back to the one, the prior one, yeah, I'm counting, let's see, one, two, what is it, five? They count the yellow and the green, one, two, three, four.
You can only count the yellow, you can only count the yellow as part-time.
Okay, but there's still five people. I mean, more than, well, there's a lot more people, I get that there's, that they're not full-time.
It's three, essentially.
Four deans in the...
Right, but they're really two, they're really two positions, because it's only half.
Okay.
And the other piece that I would say to you is, when you look at this model, the middle school would have over nine hundred and some students. By the model that you have on, on the following page that we're putting in, we've broken up the middle school and we, into two parts. We have the middle level and we have Minnet. And so that did not exist when you go back to the other proposal.
And it looks like we lost some department chairs too?
None, no.
If you go back to the prior slide?
No.
So there's two there under the, under Deacon's. Where'd they go?
Those were going to be coming from central office. And they were going to be curriculum going into Deacon's. And they would help cover in the middle school for evaluations.
Because we didn't have enough assistant principals to cover.
Right, so we did lose them, I mean...
No, we never had them.
Oh, right, yeah, they were proposed, yeah, they were, I got it. We voted for them but didn't get them.
And that, those went back in, and really, that, those would have been assistant principals that would have come out of buildings. And for us, it was much more important to keep them pushed in to buildings.
Okay, and then go back to the other slide, please? Yeah, those two positions up in the top right, where are they represented on the, on the final analysis?
They're not, they're pushed back in too.
Okay, so there's four positions.
Well, we were never going to have the department chairs at the elementary, because we did not have, they would have taught half-time.
Okay, all right, so now, now I'm done with that, unless you guys have any more questions?
I just have a question about, so on the second slide, we see what the savings is, or was going to be. But we don't see, so are there, then, does this mean there's no savings on the other side, on the last slide? Because there's nothing there saying what savings would be, is that correct?
There's no savings because we were to the point of where we had balanced a budget. And this makes it work.
So, but there's saving, there's still savings, you just redistributed the positions, is that true?
Correct.
So...
So the question would be, what would be the same? The savings is still the same, the two hundred fifty-two thousand?
We reallocated.
Okay.
And so what I'm, what I'm inferring is that since you found more money, that the, the model you have now is preferable to you and the principals?
Yes, the principals were, this was a very collaborative process. They, we met probably multiple times during the week. People input, this was something that they were part of. And yes, they wanted APs back in.
Okay. All right, so now, back to your, the textual representation, I guess. One thing noticeably absent is the alternative school. Mr. McMillan, can you go to, Mr. McMillan? Can you, sorry, can you go to the folder on that stick? To the top level. And, yep, can you open that and open that? Now, this is, this is some, can you make it big again, like you did? Yeah, thank you. Now, this is, this, these are some slides I grabbed from Desi, and this is the cooperative school. And this particular slide, if you look in the top left, it's two thousand fourteen. And I've highlighted down below, I put them in red. And you see, you see, you see the numbers there for the seventh through twelfth grade? All right, now, if you scroll down, it is, I've got more dates. I better have more dates. So this is two thousand, does it say in the top left, it's two thousand fifteen?
Yep.
And we, and we still have some kids there in the seventh and eighth grade, and then through twelfth, and then you keep going.
Sixteen?
Yeah, so that's the two thousand sixteen. And now, and now we've dropped kids in the seventh grade. There are no seventh graders in the, in the alternative school. Now, we keep going to the next, the next slide?
This is the next, this is seventeen...
Yeah, well, it keeps going, though. So then this is two thousand eighteen, meaning like two thousand seventeen to eighteen. I don't, I mean, I don't know where they got, I guess they're pretty quick, but there's, there's no one there in the seventh and eighth grade. And I just, I, I, I have to, I have to wrap my brain around why we're not doing that anymore. Why we don't have seventh and eighth grade students in the alternative school anymore.
Well, next year, you will have the ability to have eighth grade, because they'll be at the high school.
But why don't we have that ability now?
Well, because it's at the high school.
But we moved the, we moved the alternative school to the high school. We didn't just move ninth through twelfth, we moved the whole thing.
Right, and it's a school within a school.
That's right.
So, so why are there zero?
Well, we could put, we could recommend, but we'll have to set up a program to do that.
But why did we stop?
Because it's at the high school, and it was geared toward the high school.
That's not what, I mean, I was on the committee when we made that decision, that's not what we decided.
Okay.
We were moving the school, not just the ninth through twelfth. And I think we're doing a disservice to those students that could benefit from this school.
Well, we'll certainly look at that for next year.
I don't know why we're not looking at it now.
Okay.
I agree.
Thank you, all set.
So I don't think that totally answered your question, though, but what are, so who's the principal of this school now? And what other administrators are involved in that school?
Sure. Mrs. Fondulas is the principal of record, because you have to have a different principal of record. She works with Mr. Palladino. They oversee the students at the high school. The advantage would be students come in and out, depending on their options for the courses. They certainly have more opportunities to come in and out than they did when they were at the co-op. And they take test, MCAS, under their school number. They also have the ability to come into night school, which is afternoon. Next year, it will be housed in central office because of the space at the middle school. And we're looking at starting it from four to seven.
Okay. And one other question I have, that, now that Mike had brought that up, that there are no longer any seventh and eighth graders in the alternative school, so where do these children end up?
Well, they stay with us. We have different programs that we work with them, and we keep them here.
Okay. And is it possible that maybe that's why we've seen more of the disciplinary placements, or...
You know, that's...
Different, that's a different, that's a special, often a special education issue. And alternative students aren't necessarily special education.
Right, I understand that.
So...
And I, yeah, and I would also say that what we're seeing is, you know, in the past, it was seventh and eighth grade, you, you know, that had the ability several years ago. But what we're seeing now is, we're seeing more behaviors from lower middle school and upper elementary that is causing some concern that if we had an alternative-type program for third grade to sixth grade, I think that would be an area that we would like to explore at some point. When you get more up into the high school, there's some options that we have to work with students. In the lower grades, we do not have those options, and we've never had those options, to my understanding. And really, that's where we're seeing the need, the high need. And where some of our students that are going out for disciplinary issues are not the ones at the high school. They're the ones, you know, we're having...
Right, at middle school, though, right?
Well, lower, lower, and not, they would not have qualified for the program.
Right.
So one of the things that we would like to put on the table would be studying, how do we build programming, alternative programming for our lower middle school and upper elementary? One of the pieces that we're talking with, with MSBA is, once the build is finished, we're going to have some space in the middle school that we do need some alternative-type programming. And this is one of the areas that we really see we need to focus on. And this is one of the areas that we really see we need to focus on. So I think in the late summer or early fall, one of the pieces that we're going to come back and ask for a committee to be formed to study different programs around, because we're having a very challenging time meeting the needs of some of our students. And we would like to be able to keep the bed house, if at all possible.
Conversely, to the evening's tone of the meeting, I do want to say that we have some phenomenal, on the converse of that, right? We also have some unbelievable successes happening, right? Kids are actually choosing to challenge themselves, and they're making those decisions on their own. So it looks like there, there's a lack of apathy, right? There's an excitement for what's being offered. Our, our children are excited to come to school. So, I mean, I, I get that this, that there's one side of the story, and it's real, but there's also the other side, and that often is neglected sometimes in these conversations. And I just want to remind everyone that I just had phenomenal, one of the best days I've ever had at Wareham High School with the seniors and their exit interviews. Amazing, the work that they've done and the way in which they were thoughtful in their responses. It's an incredible process. On top of that, we have some unbelievable success stories all the way around. So I just don't want to forget that in our thinking about our students here at Wareham.
Oh, I, I absolutely agree, but I also think, on the other hand, too, that sometimes we don't talk about this enough, either.
I understand. I understand. I just think it's balance.
Yeah, balance.
In both ends, absolutely.
No, I, no, I agree too. I guess, I went to the top 10% dinner, I mean, that was phenomenal. And then the, the presentation afterwards, that's great. But, but we've got issues, and we need, we need to deal with them head-on. And I'm actually encouraged by Ms. Fay's presentation earlier, where she was very candid about a few things. And, and I actually attended the CPAC meeting recently about the parents' rights, and I learned a lot about the IAPs, Ms. Fay was there, too. I'm going to be, I'm going to be talking a lot with Ms. Fay, I think, in the near future. But, you know, it's, it's the whole package. I, I, I agree, I mean, I'd love to talk about the good stuff all day, you know, but, we need to get real.
But part of talking about the good stuff is being real. So I just don't want to get lost in all of it. I think it's important, we want all kids. Our motto is every student, every day. And we mean it, every student, every day. But if it's only mediocre and, and tough, that's a different conversation than this new conversation. We have, yes, we have tough, and we are hitting it head-on. We're do, and I believe that we are committed to giving every student every opportunity here. So I just didn't want to lose sight of it. And Mike, I mean, what you pointed out, you know, is true, but at the same time, we always talk about the, our number one priority is the students. And so I'm thankful that they had the opportunity to, to change, to, to reexamine, and again, put the resources where they were needed and to use. So, yes, I mean, the configuration changed from where we voted at the beginning, but if, you know, if they were tied into that and weren't able to change from that, well then, then we wouldn't be putting our, you know, taking our resources and reexamining where to put them to make the best use of them at all times. So that's just, but, you know, you're right, things did change. But it's, it's just important to me, when we have limited resources, that we're able to use them in the best possible way, for the, for the good of all the students.
And I think the final thing that I would say would be, when you look at the strengths of our principals and where they're best suited, I think right now, we have four outstanding principals that will lead us forward into next year. And I have the utmost confidence in their ability. And in that other model, we had three. And I think by going to four, that gives us much more ability to use their expertise. And so those, why I made those decisions. If there are other questions, I'd be happy to answer them. If not, I have a few more things to talk about.
I'm guessing that, you know, some of these concerns that you brought forward regarding disciplinary concerns and challenging students, or students that are higher, at higher risk at a younger age, probably went into the decision to make sure you had the additional principal?
It did, thank you for bringing that up. It did, because, you know, Mrs. Seaman also has a wonderful rapport with third and fourth grade, and we did not want to lose that. And Mrs. Chandler's done a remarkable job this year. I think Tracy Cote will be fabulous. And when we had the large school, you know, there was some, some concern about just their ability to manage to, and this decision was not made lightly. This decision was made after numerous conversations with principals, with its system principals, with other staff, to make sure that we had the support that we need. If next week I would hear that I have X number of dollars coming, I certainly would come back to you and ask for your guidance, but I would hope that we would look to continue to put the money right back to students. And I feel confident, confident that this board would, because you've always demonstrated students first. Moving on, you ready? All right, so just to keep you updated on where we are with the moving process, we're meeting weekly with the principals or necessary people to talk about the different pieces, because there are so many moving parts right now. Boxes have been delivered to our elementaries and our middle schools, teachers are actively packing rooms. Students have been up looking at the buildings. Mrs. Seaman's just told me tonight, a wonderful piece of information. The PTA will be donating $15,000 for us to help put a playground area at the middle school. We're in the process of having the preschool playground that is currently at Minnetonka moved over to DeCus, so we're, we're taking care of that. And so we're well on the road.
Just, just, that's great news about the playground at middle school, but where's it going?
Well, that's what Mrs. Seaman's going, will be walking with the person. One of the things that we've talked about just briefly, but the type of, of equipment that would be more universal, maybe more of the obstacle course type of, of equipment, something that, that would be safe for all students? Because we know this area up here is actively used by many, many, many people in various age groups, so we want to make sure that we do our due diligence. And I know Mrs. Seaman's will do a wonderful job making that happen. So, we are now in the home stretch of our school year. Information is going out. We're making adjustments to time schedules. I will be sharing that with you. There will be an adjustment to the start time at DeCus. We'll start a little bit earlier. Minnetonka will start a little bit later. Just, no, Minnetonka will go first, and then DeCus. The high school and middle school will stay on the same time, and then when we drop off, there'll be that change. And the reason why we set and made the changes, we've had comments from parents that it's very difficult to get their child between Minnetonka and DeCus, so to take that into consideration, we're going to give a little bit of time between that. So we'll be putting that out. It's gone through the teachers' association, so it's, it's final. And bus routes, information is being sent in. There's been a glitch with the school box for people to submit their online payments, so we've delayed the payment even out to July 13th. And if it doesn't get online when school box says that it should be online, we'll push it out even more, because we certainly know that this is a burden for some people. Okay, any questions?
So the bus routes are currently being done?
Yes.
So how are we, so the purpose of the, the bus fare was to reduce bus routes, if you could consolidate?
Sure, well, it's to help offset transportation cost, but it's also to make sure that if you're going to ride, we know you're going to ride, and you will be receiving a bus pass. Because unless we do a very, very thorough survey, we have to reserve seats for everyone, and then we have many buses that are not full.
So do we anticipate, after everyone has submitted, after everything's happened, for any less buses?
Absolutely, absolutely. We built that into our budget, actually, so that needs to happen. And that's one thing that we're actively looking on. We're looking at the lease of vans. We have a couple vans that are on their very last leg with hundreds of thousands of miles on them. And so they'll be replaced, and then we're looking at bringing back at least two out of district transportation runs into in-house that will help offset costs, too.
And just to go back a little bit about the, the preschool playground, so we're moving it again, how much is that going to cost?
About $10,000.
That's what I thought, that it was fairly expensive to move it.
It is. But that also will have it fenced-
I'm sorry, go ahead.
We'll have it fenced in because it's, it needs to be fenced in.
Right, yeah.
One of the pieces we ask about would be, will it compromise it? We were told that it would not compromise. When we, we do not intend to move it back, because when we relocate our preschool back over at the new building, we'll be purchasing new equipment.
Okay. And just out of curiosity, last one, my last question is about the boxes. I heard that the boxes had to be approved by the movers and that they had to be certain boxes. I mean, that, so did you, so that's not true?
I haven't heard that, because the movers supplied the boxes.
Well, that's what I mean, that they had to be certain boxes, yeah.
Well, it's just, I think maybe more is, is just, we're encouraging staff to all use the same size of box. Because obviously, if they're going to be stacked and moved, if they're all different sizes, the boxes may not be able to support the weight of the boxes on top of them. So if you've got big boxes and then smaller boxes, that means you're not putting the right pressure on the right parts of the box, and it just causes damage to the goods inside, what's inside, so.
And is this just included in the cost, total cost?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. What is the total cost?
So it's a, a, so we've, on the basis of an hourly rate, so they've got a kind of minimum of about $40,000 and a maximum of $50,000.
All right, so we've, we've actually gone over the estimated cost of moving. I thought the estimated cost total was $50,000.
Yeah, so it's between 40 and 50.
But, I mean, we also have to take in consideration moving the playground and buying, while PTA is buying the other stuff, but.
And I think when you talk about the boxes, I mean, I would be notorious. If I was packing, I'd just be throwing books in there, and they would be so heavy, nobody would lift them, so this also helps control some of that for injuries.
Okay.
Any other questions that I can answer for you? If not, please let me know. Happy to do that, and I will get you that information about special ed numbers and-
Okay, thank you.
Figure that out. And be thinking about who wants to be on that committee.
On which committee?
Session.
Oh, the, oh, for the alternative programming, okay.
I see your hand.
Okay, school committee reports. Does anyone have any school committee reports? Okay. The executive session minutes will be released from executive sessions on March 22nd, 2017, October 25th, 2017, January 3rd, 2018, and February 28th, 2018. And finally, does anyone have any business that was not anticipated? 48 hours? No? Okay, but I have a motion to adjourn then?
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.